Kusinjo na, ethiopiana, vannu oru ethiopian.
Kushi means he is an ethiopian.
Aha, karupun artho.
It means he is dark.
Aha, oru ethiopian.
He is an ethiopian.
Aha, neendu olakathila karupaavo, alag illiyoh, theramilliyoh, kr, enna illiyoh, illa illa ngerala irukkado. Aha, othathamudikumodhi appidi mudichire? Narchi idiyodu mudi.
You might be dark in this world without any beauty or any talents but when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings.
Vakkalakarukkade.
You might not be beautiful.
Moody style, moody style arukkade.
The hair will not be beautiful.
Othadala karukkade.
The lips will not be beautiful.
Reda tol kereyade.
There is no white skin.
Aha, idellam pracheneelae.
But this is not a matter.
In the worldathila nee, enna alangolamar nalasari, othathamudikumodhi viswasa pathile, narchi idiyodu nee mudikana.
However, this oddly you might be found in the world when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings.
Esuva talayamudiyachuriti churiti vudditthi, eerukiravale make-up allam voditthi, nee thothu porathu veda, in the worldathila krisuvukaavu laavutti viddi, nee karupa irundhalav, kar manavatthi arundhal pothumanaathu.
Curling your hair and fashioning yourself with all the designs of the world and feeling in this world, life there is no use if you race, finish the race with good tidings, it is sufficient.
Nan karpa iruthukkaan, nan karpa irukkrennendru enne seyadiringal, parathiriringal.
Do not look at me because I am dark.
Aha, colorless, idellam prachneekereyade.
Color dress and this is not a matter.
Colorless, colorless.
Colorless is not a matter.
Aha, adu oru prachneekereyade.
This is not a matter at all.
Namdri poodukame, alagum illai, sounderiyum illai.
Our policy is, there is no form of godliness.
Kathrudeyaparishuthanamathukku mayimundavada.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Mudulam Samuel, padinela madhigaram, padinela padinettu vasanangal vasukkala.
First Samuel, chapter seventeen, verses seventeen and eighteen.
Kathrudeyaparishuthanamathukku mayimundavada.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Isai thandrayakumarakietavi denauki, silakariyengal chollukkadaaga, namipodukkadi vasikke kaitam.
We read of certain things which Jesse the father says unto his son David.
Isai nuroya pilligalil, oru silar, ranuvathile pani purindharka.
The sons of David, some of them were in the military.
Oru silar veettila eyindharka.
Some of them were at home.
Oru silar, aadugalai metukondhundharka.
Some of them were grazing the sheep.
Andhata gapan, overurukum, overuwelele, avralai amarti vaitturundhan.
That father placed each of them in different positions.
Israelele, oru yuttam naddakkukuyaya, oru suunnalai undaiyundhadu.
There was a time in Israel when there was a war.
Saul raja vakaerundhan.
Saul was the king.
Pelishtargal, avanemerekkullai, vaki deditikondhundharka.
And Philistines were seeking that they might war with him.
Suunnalai, iranduverukkum adukulamana porathu, iranduverum yuttam seyya ayathamanarka, pelishtargalum, Isravela.
When situations came to be compromising to each other, Philistines and the children of Israel began to war.
Anal, saulodurundhadana janangal kule, oru baimum thikulum marindharundhadu.
But the people who were standing along with Saul, there was fear and trembling.
Yuttan erathle, oru raachasa paravi vandhu, silakariyengalai pesa arambithaan.
A giant, giant came before them at the time of war and began to speak.
Navakelarka, adu terindhadaana oru kariyam.
This is what all of us know.
Avan chonnai, oru chinnakariyavanen chonnai, yen, ratthamsindhavendam, oru oburu, orutthurukko orutthar, modikolallam.
Why should we shed blood? Let us go with one against the other, he said.
Neekitaamilla chollavanga, elladu taminalilla chollavanga, erukubodisandabodno, ottekyothikum modikolannu chollavanga.
In Tamil Nadu, they will say, why should we fight like this? Let us go one against the other.
Idiyekariyate, avanun cholla arambithaan.
He also said like this.
Ongelorala kottikondhvarangal, nan nikkeren, yenne avgal jayuthu vittal, nangelalaram adibai, nan avni jayuthal, ningalalaram adibai.
And choose one man from among you and let him fight with me, and if he is able to overcome me, then we will all be yours, but if we prevail, then you will all be ours.
Ippidi naangu naatkil, avan indhasaval vudavan, indha janangal ketta odane, bayindu odi payudavara.
Like this, every day he used to come and ask, come unto the people, and the people get afraid and they will go away.
Abhisheenbattasaul, thanduruyavalkile silatholvige vandhabidinaale, indha sathruva eduthinikka thrani illamal, avan aranmanile, kattukondhundhan.
Since this anointed Saul, who has having no capability to stand against this giant, he was staying in his palace.
Indha yuttukumunbagaave, avanukulai asutthavi, porada arambithivutthathe.
Even before this war, the evil spirit began to trouble him.
Onna Samuel, padinara padinallai, namidipadikamudiyam.
In first Samuel sixteen sixteen, we can read about this.
Anghey, avanukulai, andhavi nuroya thakkadal, padinara padinangala, namidipadikamudiyam.
In sixteen fourteen, we can see this.
Anabidinaale, avan yuttakalathukku varamale, oringipoyavutthan.
Therefore, he did not come to the war field, he went away.
Avan angeyindhugundu, yaravudupoy jaythal, nan ninudiyamagali, vivahum seyyuku dukkarenendru, avan pesikundeyerundhan.
Staying there, he said that if anyone will go and overcome him, then I will get my daughter married to him.
Naatkil boyikundeyerindhabidinaal, Isai, thandrayakumarakleyakurithaana, oru kavale eyerpattu, avargalippidirukkaragalendu parukkumudiyaga, thandrayelayakumarane, avan anuppa arambikran.
As days went by, Jesse was careful about his sons and was worried about them and sent his younger son unto them.
Isai, thankumarakietavi denauki, nan unneyundaya sagovathukka anupugiren, nee unsaagovathil othamai poy, ivagalekkuuduthu, avralippidirukkaragalendu parthu, adayalathai vangi konduva, enduchonnan.
And Jesse said, and today, with his son, take now therefore for thy brethren all these, and run to the camp, and take a pledge of them and come back.
Indha Bible study vandhu, nee othamai po, adayalathai vangiwa.
Today's Bible study is, run to the camp and take the pledge.
Idhuthan namdri indhye vedabharathunudhey thalaippu.
This is the topic of our Bible study today.
Nee othamai pogavendam, anal thirimbivaramporathu, adayalathodu varavendu.
You should run to the camp and take the pledge on the return.
Padinela vasanathila kadaisile, nee othamai po, enduchollukkaran, padinettavaasana kadaisile, adayalathai vangi konduva, enduchollukkaran.
In verse seventeen, the last portion, he is asking to run to the camp, and verse eighteen, the last portion, he says, take the pledge.
Indha viswasa valkay, oru othappayanam, othappandayam.
This life of faith is a race.
Aha, indha othappandhitle, pallar odukraragal, pallar odi vittaaragal, pallar odi kondrukrom, innor periyal thralkotam, oda arambikum.
In this race, many of them have run the race, many of them have finished the race, many of us are still running to it.
Anegar odi irukkaragal, avargalippidirukkara, avargalikkum devanakkum teriyam.
Many of them have run the race, there be they have run only they and God knows.
Anal, indha othamudiyamporathu, nee adayalathai vangi kondu, angay poy nikkevendam.
But at the end of the race, we should get a sign and go stand.
Adavudhu, ivan kondubonadana, andhapalkattigal varutha payirallam, avunkakarachida, avgasouma arkanlan, patthitthi, aam pettukonden, enkara kayalithu vangi kondu, enesinuvame, avu solonu, namapettukondomn, adavangi kuddi, ivan vedupoy, tagapandakudutha, tagapunakurun nimmadhi, namupoy parkattalo, payyam payipathirkam, pollingalan allaarikanka.
If he go and hand, and hand over the parched corn and the ten cheeses to the brethren, and take a sign from them, and bring back to his father, then the father will be having a relaxation, that his, their children's sons are fine.
Nammyankuda, thandnamdriyadevan, oru nokkathodindhavumile, anipirukkara.
Even God, the father, sent us with a purpose to the earth.
Indha othathay, namipidio dukram.
How are we running this race?
Poruvali iduvaray, appidi odi irukkrom, enbadinirani thupartal, namdri othathilulakorayvadugalai, nam sari seyyukulla, iyelum.
Maybe if we examine ourselves, just how far we have run this race thus far, then we can rectify our lives.
Appidi korayvadugal, namkuttenbadavittal, mattavul odukravothathilulak, andheneravi parkumporathu, namdri korayve, namkandukkala mudiyam.
If you are not able to find a shortcoming in our race, then if we see the race that others are running, we can rectify, we can see the shortcomings in us.
Nam thirumavun chollukkare.
Again repeat.
Mattavurukkadi, nerevi parkumporathu, namdri korayvutteri meetavara, mattavurukkadi korayviparkumporathu, nam nerevululukpola, yamaatupattupoyavutavam.
When we see the fullness of the others, then we will find the people who are shortcoming, but if we, we find the people who are shortcoming, then we will find us with fullness.
Oru van sathruvayindhalakuda, avanathululaknalla karaykale, kallakariyengalai, nam kattukkula vendidha avasyam.
Even if one be our enemy, it is needful for us to learn good things out of him.
Avundhitaramigale, nam kattukkula vendidha avasyam.
We should learn his talents.
Aha, avundhitaramigale, nam kattukkula porathu, namukke, adu samayathukuruviseyam.
When we learn of his talents in times to come, it will help us.
Aha, ingey nam parkumporathu, iduru otham.
When we consider here, this is a race.
Indha kariyathuchollu, othamai po.
And he is telling, run to the camp.
Chikramahoppo.
Go fast.
Aha, neethirimbivarno, anadayalathodu thirimbivarno.
You should come back, but you should take a pledge from them.
Neenundaya pillaidhan.
You are my son.
Aha, nee abhisheenbattavandhan.
You are anointed.
Singaththemerekkondaavandhan.
You have overcome the lion.
Aha, karadhyemerekkondaavandhan.
You have overcome the bear.
Alakasuramadala vasikakudiyavandhan.
And you are able to play on the harp.
Aadugaliporupai kattukulukkavandhan.
You are able to keep the sheep properly.
Tagapunadivaathike kilkupidikavandhan.
And you are obeying to the father's voice.
Appidi palavidamana qualification, ongelukku, ongamakum, avanakkum, irukkalam irundhadu.
Like this, he and we could have such qualifications.
Anal, tagapunipocholradu, nee po, othamapo, anadayalathavangiituva.
But now the father is asking him to run and take the pledge.
Idhuthan tagapunnuroya vaanchay.
This is the desire of the father.
Neepooru mukkiamala, adayalathodu thirimbivarno.
Your running to the camp is not important, but you should take the pledge.
Anegar odukraragal, anal, oruvaandhan, parisai pettukkulukkaran.
Many of them are running the race, but only one takes the prize.
Aha, indha othamdan, avanukku, valkinudhey tanning points.
It is this race that became a turning point in his life.
Aha, palayedangalika, avandhyavalkile poyirukkaran, andhavayidukullaga.
He has gone to many places within that age.
Andhakurikappattavayidukullu, palayedangalika, avan poyirukkaran.
Within that age, he has gone to different places.
Indha edathukuponam padhingala, ingedaavandhyavalkay, thirupumunayaga mariyavuttha.
But his running to this place became a turning point of his life.
Angerindhada, avandhyavalkay payanam, uttilamaga, andhakaragadu, aadumaykaran, thothil, avanukillu, aduthandha abhisheenathunudhey kattupakleye, sailbada, arambithaan.
It is from this race that his total life has changed, and from then, he did not go to graze the sheep, he led his life on a turn, on a turning.
Aduvarika, avanukku, veedu, aadumaykara, indharindhan, avanukkundhadu.
Until then, his house and grazing of sheep was there in him.
Aha, avanukkarengi mitthiriyadu, appidi engiaponam, odane vandruva.
He does not know anything else, if he goes likewise, he will come back.
Anal, ippodhu, avandhyavalkayave, kattathirupuyudukkara.
But now the Lord is turning his life.
Aha, tagapunmula mahave thirupukkara.
He is turning it through the Father.
Anal, enna pathile ponaal, devanamennadathukkara, madhala, neengavisvasikana.
Because, and therefore, at any path we go through, we should believe that firstly, God is leading us.
Aha, appidi avan viswasiithu, tagapunadivaathike kilkupidinda, appidiye purappattuponam.
When he thus believed, he believed in the Father and obeying to his birth, and went like that.
Aha, adu avanuvalkayave, puratti pottuvattha.
And that turned over his life.
Aadumaythavani, singasana thukke, uriyavanaga, adu machivattha.
He was grazing sheep, he made him birthday of the throne.
Aha, jyadiyamum, padinela madhigaramthala, nam parkumporathu.
When we read in Genesis chapter thirty six.
Josephin valkayum, tagapunanuppinasunnelile, valkay, thirupumunayaga mariinadu.
Even in the life of Joseph, the situation that his father is sending him is a turning point in his life.
Aha, jyadiyamum, padinella padimullabarkumporathu, tagapunavani koobitthi, nan unneyavallathukka sagovathila anuppa pogiren, va, endran.
In Genesis chapter thirty seven, verse thirteen, we see that the father is calling him and saying, that I will send thee unto the brethren, come.
Odane avan chonnai, nan pogiren.
And immediately, he said, I will go.
Ingeyum, tagapun, avanukku, adigapasamurundhalo, devasithath, enrapogudi varumborathu, pasathivodikivittu, avanay anipuyudukkaran.
Here too, the father is a lot of love for him, but when it comes to the will of God, he puts aside this love and sends into the will.
Jyadiyamum, padinella madhigaram, monavasanathle, avan kumarad, ellariyilum, avanay adigamay neeshithaan.
In Genesis, chapter thirty seven, verse three, we see above all his children, he loved him more.
Kattar namineeshikirathu unmai.
It is true that the Lord is loving us.
Anal, adhenarathle, nammula may, tamudheshithath, neravetvendumendhu, vanchikkarathu unmai.
But at the same time, through us, he wants to do the will of, will through us.
Avaruyanbu, avaruyeshitham, enduparkumporathu, devan, thandrayeshithathukka, adigamay edangudukkara.
When we see his love and the will of God, God gives more importance to his will.
Aha, tamudheshithamendu varumborathu, anbuodikivaitivittu, tamudheshithathesigarakariyengaladhan, thiuramaga, devan irangukkara.
When it comes to his will, he puts aside this love and is more concerned about the will.
Pida, thandraykumarane, pirindhu irundhadu, kereyade.
The father has never departed from his son.
Anal, devasithathendu vandhoborathu, avari siluvayile, arayamudiyaga, andhavaduklin padiki, appidiyopu, opuyuthuvutthu.
But when it comes to the will of God, the father, he didn't help to be crucified and go in the path of suffering.
Anbuveda, tamudheshithathukku, shithathesailbuduthavendumendhu, devan migavum gavannamay irukkara.
More than his will, the Lord is much concerned about fulfilling the will of God.
Ingey nam parkumporathu, nan unneyavallathukka anupugirenendru, Josephin tagapunanuppinoborathu, avan ponaan, avan valkay payanam, perupadiki thirupappattuvutthathe.
Here, when the father of Joseph sent him, saying that I will send you to my dear brethren, his lifestyle also changed.
Angeyum, avanukkuchollappattavaththi, enadri ma?
They do the words spoken to him.
Neepoy, unrayakadharudeshayamam, appidi endruppar?
You go and see the well-being of your brethren.
Aadugalippidirukkaranendu par?
See how the flocks are.
Yanakku, madhuseydi konduva?
And bring me back again.
Aha, jyadiyamum, padinella padinallu, makkthos.
Genesis thirty seven, verse fourteen.
Appalu devan, neepoy, unsaagodharudeshayamam, appidi endrum, aadugalippidirukkarenndu, parthu, yanakku madhuseydi konduva, endru, unkussolli.
Padhingala, nee aadugalippidirukkandhu, patthitthi, ongasagodharul, appidi irukkan, patthitthi, neeneseeno? Neenakondvaranam, yanake, madhuseydi yanakukonduva?
You see how your brethren are and how the flocks are, and bring me back again.
Aha, idhuthan devanudhey thittam.
This is the plan of God.
Tagapunnuroye thittamla, idhuthan, neepo, paru, appidi irukkangalam, patthitthi, sugashaydila, visarichitti, yanakku madhuseydi konduva?
The father's plan is this, that go and ask the welfare of your brethren and bring me back again.
Aha, Isai athiruktharshina postavam.
In the prophetical book of Isaiah.
Aha, ingey, yarayanananupuvayenndru, kattare oru kailvi kattukkara.
Here, the Lord is asking us, whom shall I send?
Aha, yarayanananupuvayen.
Whom shall I send?
Idhuthan, adutthulindhu vandhuthana, oru sattam.
This is the voice which came out from God.
Aha, Isaiya, aramadhigaramthena parkumporathu.
Genesis, Isaiya, chapter six.
Aha, etta vasanathle.
Verse eight.
Yarayanananupuvayen.
Whom shall I send?
Yar namadukariyamai, povan?
Whom will go for us?
Adukkanaan, idho, adiyenirukkaren, enne anupumendu chonnain.
Then said I, here I am, send me.
Aha, ingeyum, pida, ivrayanipittu, oru adayalathodu, thirimbivara chollukkara, adhunadayalan, na, siluvay maranam.
Here, to the father, sent Simon, comes back with a sign, that is the death of cross.
Avadayalaminna?
What is the sign?
Avadiparapukku, oru adayalan kodukappadathe.
There was a sign given to his birth.
Aha, avadiparapukke, oru adayalan kodukappadathe.
There was a sign given to his birth.
Adi enne parapukka adayala?
What was that sign?
Isaiya, yala madhigaram, padinangavaasana thiparkumporathu.
Isaiah, chapter seven, verse fourteen.
Andavaramay, ungelukku, oru adayalathikoduppar, oru kannigay, karpavadiyagi, oru kolandhey, peruvay.
The Lord himself shall give you a sign, behold, a virgin shall conceive and bear a son.
Avadiparaple, oru adayalam kanappadathe.
There was a sign in his birth.
Ippavaru thirimbivarno.
Now he should come back.
Aha, ippathandray devanndray, shithathneravetramal thirimbivandhal, adhadaadayalam, ala.
Now, without fulfilling the will of God, if he should come back, it is not a sign.
Esu arputangalay chedhar.
Jesus did miracles.
Adayalangalay chedhar.
He dimine signs.
Prisaasakalay thurathinath.
He cast out demons.
Mari thorey edupinath.
And he resurrected the dead.
Aha, peri peri, kariyengalam seyyadhar.
He did great and great things.
Adi esu chedhar, arputangal, namukke, kanakkile adangadha.
The miracles which Jesus did is not in our measure.
Vedhathiluchollappattuvan, guda, korayvane, sambavungal mathramay.
The incidents which are cited in the word of God are all very few.
Avar seyyda, arputangalay, elininath, indhavulakum, kollathu, endru, oru manidanth chollukkara.
One man of God says that if the miracles which he has done is written, it in this world cannot suffice.
Andhavu, avarathulindha, arputangal, purappattukondhey, irundhadu.
To that extent, the miracles proceeded from him.
Over naalu, avarchedhal, arputantha.
Every day, what he did was a miracle.
Aha, andharputangalay, kanakkile adangadhar, arputangal.
That miracles were without number.
Anal, idellam, oru mukkiamana kariyamagave, illa.
But these were not all important.
Vedhamen, chollukkara.
What does the word of God say?
Aha, avar, kadaisinarathle, indha pathram, ningakkudumanal, ningittumendu chollukkara.
In his last moments, he says, if this cup is able to depart, let it depart.
Aha, anal, andhakariyathle, devan anumadikavillai.
But God did not admit in this manner.
Aha, andhakariyathle, devasithathak, devan kandipaga, nindhukundhundhar.
It was in this place where the God was very strict concerning.
Aagilum, umrayeshithathinbadhi, aagakkadavani, ivarayachaya, cholla vaittha.
And again, he said, it, I will be done.
Ippo, adayalathodu, thavatthirimbivapogun.
Now he has to go back with the sign.
Ratthamsindhinavara, adhulay, mariithu, uyirudi, elindhu, avar, adhadaadayalam, thirumavay, kumaran, kumaran, paladu barshathu, payukkaravendu.
Being shed his blood, and he is died, and he resurrected, and went and sat on the right hand of God, that is a sign.
Aha, evlo, indhapustavutthi, aliirada, ethniyoo, arputangalay chedhar, adhulam, mukkiamala, thirimbivapogumporathu, uyirtthilandhavari, poisyara vendam.
He did innumerable miracles which are not written in this book, but when he returns with the sign that he is resurrected, he should go.
Mariithudukku, mukkiamala.
Not sufficient, he is dead.
Ratthamsindhinadu, guda, mukkiamala.
Not sufficient, he shed his blood.
Avar uyirtthalavittal, engu day prasangam, virudha, endu, powul pesukkara.
Saint Paul priest is saying, that if he is not resurrected, our preaching is in vain.
Aha, uyirtthilandha, pidaavin, valadu barshathu, payukkaravendu.
Only if he is resurrected, he can go sit on the right hand of the father.
Avan thandraykumaranukku, oru adayalathai, pettukkundhavavachonnar.
Then even his son, also he asked to get a sign and come.
Aha, Yakubu thandraykumaranukchollukkara, neepoy, madhuseydi konduva?
Jacob told to his son to bring back good news.
Aha, Isai thandraykumaranukchollukkara, nee othamai po, adayalathavangi konduva?
Jesse told to his son to go run speedily and bring back the pledge.
Namdri othamudiyamporathu, namdri kaila adayalam irukkuma?
But we finish our race, will there be a sign in our hand?
Namdri otham, appidi irukkara.
How was our race?
Adhinaam, indhanakal, sindhikavendidha, avasyam.
That it is needful for us to think about it.
Avargal souma irukkaragala?
Are they fine?
Avargal seyamay irukkaragala?
Are they keeping well?
Aadugalippidirukkara?
How are the flocks?
Neenathirimbivay, ennesoluvige?
What will he go back and say?
Ummadhyadugalay, patthi, neenatholuvige?
What will he say about the flocks?
Aha, onggukkada irukkaramal, patthi, ennesoluvige?
What will he say about the ones with you?
Oru purushan, poy, ma, malepoy, sarukkaran, vittukolangala.
He say, for example, one husband is going and reaching.
Angaboy, ennesoluvara?
What will he go and say?
Nan indhavala, valkile, samaganaamay irundhen?
I had been peaceful in my life.
Nanamay, nanumay, nakukuduthamanivim, enudhey pilligalum, namgalsabailay, siyoni le, arputangalakum, adayalangalakum, irundhom, enduchonnaltha, avan, engay, irangarigam, ulle irangarigam.
If he should say that I am the wife and my children given to me are signs and one dozen signs, only then will he get his place in heaven.
Aha, mattavudiyam, irangarigurukkavai, pugal korayu.
And otherwise, there are very few chances for getting opportunity.
Namdri devan, edirupavukkara, enna, neenindhavulakathli, ennesayyo, thirimbivapogumporathu, onkaila adayalanga irukkavendu.
All what the Lord expects from us is, whatever you are doing on this earth, you should have a sign when you go back.
Sadarnama, oru owner, thandrayavallayal, oru panathukuduthu, oru alathukuduthivunda, guda, kuduthidhey, adavenduva ma? Huh? Sign vanduva ma?
Ordinarily, if an owner is giving something, you should go give it and get the sign and come, he will say.
Aha, receipt vanduva, cholluva?
He is asking to get back the receipt.
Neenangponadukken, adayalan, kappam.
He will ask us to, what is the sign of you going there?
Aha, nammasavaila, guda, kilkupidiyadha, silapilligalirupan.
Even in our church, there will be disobedient children.
Avakoyiluktham, ponaan, cholluva?
They will say that I have gone only there.
Madhaya, amma pakkapang, enne, ennapurasangam, abidnaga.
Then the parents will ask us to, what message was today?
Sudarichavu, varavaliyala, attakketorva?
If he is very alert, they will ask the people on the way itself.
Oru silar, appidi illa, adu, napoona, abidn, endzavun, cholluva, ena, pogaala, anala, samaliyikara.
Some children are not so because he will manage the situation that he is not gone.
Anal, nam, indhavulakathli, devan, namay anipirukkara, namakorutai meruk.
We have been sent by God and we have a due time.
Indhatimekula, namenallamo, chaila, anal, thirimbivapogumporathu, adayalallam, enesigurathu, pothe, kurathu.
Within this time, we can do anything, but when we go back, we should not go back without a sign.
Nehemiaavin visuyathle, andharaaja kakkara, nan unyananupura, omprayana, yavnalalav, yavnalal, neethirimbivavu, adesolunkara.
In the matter concerning Nehemia, the king says, I will send you, but you say, as to how long will it take for your journey, when will you return?
Nan unyananupura.
I am sending you.
Nehemia, rendhamadhigara, aravasanathila, parkumporathu.
Nehemia, chapter two, verse six.
Aha, raja, ennay parthu, unprayanam, yethanenal, sellem?
The king looked, looking unto me, asked me, as to how long will be the journey?
Nee appodhu, thirimbivavuva?
When will the hour return?
Aha, kosinabarka, nee, omvalkay payanay, yavnalal, poho, nee, yappoy, antathirimbivavandhu, kattakakkara, namdakakata, ennesoluva?
God is asking us, as to how long will your life's journey be, and when will you come back to me, if the Lord asks us, what will we say?
Unrayavalkay, jayamay mudike, nee yavnalal, kodutha, mudichiravandhu, katta, neen, yethanal, choluvige?
If the Lord asks you, as to how many days shall I grant you, that you might live your life victoriously, what, how many days will you say?
Ennadeshithathinbadhi, nee parivournamasenji, nee, indhavumile, unakuthirindha, shatiathinbadhi, vallandhu, nee, jayathodu, mudichthi, antavaruvan, chonnai, unakethanal, vandhukkata, neen, yethanavasangapiga?
According to my will, if you victoriously finish your race and come back to me, if he asks us, how many years you need, how many years will you ask?
Chollukkala, Bible study, jana?
This is Bible study.
Neen yavnalal kodutha, neen, oru parishuthavana, mariyuvige?
How many days will it be given to you, that you might become a saint?
Onnu vandhaga, ennekeshathukittapodhu, abidnagiringala?
Are you saying, I don't want anything if he gets me?
Sethukkiddra, alavula, orurum, seyrakudada, oliil, vasamunukkara, devantavay, cheranunna, namu, oru oliya, maranada, po, enesiyamudiyav? Sera, mudiyam.
If we have to go reach the Lord, who is with us, who is in light, only if we become light, we can go join him.
Avarathil, yavnalavenu, irul, illai?
There is no darkness in him at all.
Chen, na, enayantinna, irul illa, abidn chollingala, thansagodharunup, pagikkara, van, oliil, naddakkaran, enduchonnalum, avan, irulakkara, irulil, kattakkara.
Do you say that you have no darkness? He who hates his brother is how much, he says, he is in light, he is in darkness.
Erislaimukku, poyitthu varathukke, neepoy, andhakariyengal, successpintin, thirimbivavadukke, yavnalal, aakun, katta, avan, odane, cholluva, yanake, arunthiruthinala, yavnalthirutho, edhavun, nal, cholluva, ivan, nal, aakun, cholluva.
When the king asked him, Master, how many days will it take for you to go to Jerusalem, rectify and come back, he is saying that he will, if he is given six hundred and twenty days, it is possible.
Yavnalavukalam, sellemendu, nan rajaavukkichonnain.
He told the king, as to so many days will take.
Appodhu, enne, anupva, avarkisithamai, thay?
Then he delighted to send him.
Ongelathenavasam vandhav?
How many years you need?
Enno, rendhavusavada, settlepanirivingala, lalame?
Another two years, will you set everything right?
Oru manushan, settlepannacholi, Isaiya, padinella chonnai, oh, nu, kandhaladha, timee, solamatinta, karsala, andavara, pathupaninjosham koduthara?
In Isaiah, chapter thirty eight, and to a man, he asked him, Master, how many days will you want to set your life in order, then he, the Lord himself gave him fifteen years.
Avar, nanachari, ivan, peri raja, peri peri, sadhana, chinchirukkara, orainal, settlepaniravan, cholitthi, nee, chikramavu, vutthikariyathu, orundupaduthu, nee, palkkamatai, mariithu, povan, cholluvuttha?
The Lord thought that he being a great king, he will sit right at his house, even in one day, he sits at then, house in order, for thou shalt die not live.
Esakyavun, nalamanushan.
Esakyav was good man.
Anal, kadaisinarathle, konya, korapavadiyam, arna.
But in his last days, he became a man of confusion.
Aha, neen avandray, saruthrathapadcha, unkukthiriyam.
If you read this history, you can learn it.
Madhala, koobitthu, odane, poyitthuva?
If, when he was called, he would have gone immediately.
Madhala, avanukke, allamay, success.
Everything was successful in his life.
Elupulalar, ndhakalangal.
That was a time when he was fully successful.
Aha, ellam, poyitthukum, appo, koobitthu, cholirpa, ipavandharan, cholirpa?
When he was called at that time, if he was called, he would say, he would come.
Aha, anal, last, konyalal, avan, thaduvar, arambcha.
But in the last few days, he began to stumble.
Adeni, naalavuttilim, padikala, raja, kalyim, padikala?
That you can read both in chronicles, chronicles and.
Indhatitle, vandhu, nee, settlepanni, nee, kalamunavane, avanukke, settlepanam, mudiyala?
When he was asked to settle at that time, he was not able to settle it.
Ippavonam, adayalan kondu, poamudiyadu?
Now, if he should go back, he cannot take the sign.
Aha, jayathodu, othathamudichin, chollamudiyadu, poy?
He cannot say that he finished his race victoriously.
Ongelak, yavnalal vandhav?
How many days will it take for you?
Oru varsha, nekudutha, na, successairavandhavala, chollingala?
Are you saying, after a year, I will be successful?
Nedittha, vallvay, nan kettukondhundhukkara?
I am asking God for long days.
Yavnalal?
How many days?
Huh? Nouru, isha?
Is it hundred years?
Yavnalakalan, ungal, avan, ketta, odane, cholltha, yanakku, yavnal, time kodunga, nan vandhrav, karakthavandharav?
When he was asked, he immediately said, you give me so many days, and he will come back on it.
Esuukku, oru kurikappattakalam, kodukappadathe.
Jesus was given in a pointed time.
Sariyana, narathle, andhanda kariyathu, mudich, karakthi, thithal, poytha?
At the point of time, he fulfilled everything and returned back.
Avargal, mundra varshana, uliyan, chonnam, mundra varshana?
It was only three and a half years that he did the ministry.
Anakilkupidilangarathu, padinettu varshad.
But obedience was eighteen years.
Appidina? Na, chonnadu, karakthana?
Is it correct?
Karaktha? Pettoorukkay, kilkupidinathu, padinettu varsho, uliyathil, kilkupidinathu, mundra varsho.
He obeyed his parents for eighteen years and obeyed for ministry, three and a half years.
Padinella, avar, tedi, kandupidichu, vedukuthu, naanga, adhukke, pinbu, avar, enesidindhar, pettoorukke, kilkupidindhundhar?
They searched and brought him, and he was twelve years after that, he was obedient to his parents.
Adharamaidhin, kalangal.
That was the time of silence.
Aha, appidiye, kilkupidindukkandhey, irundhadu.
He was just obedient till then.
Adhukke, pinbu, pidaavukke, kilkupidinar, marittha?
After that, he began to obey his father.
Adhumundra varsham.
That was for three and a half years.
Pettoorukke, kilkupidindhade, veda, paramapidaavukke, kilkupidindhade, avaray, purunaragam, aachinadu?
More than to obey, obey to his parents, he obeying to the father took three and a half years.
Priyavungalarko? Padinettu varsham, pettoorukke, kilkupidindhade, veda, munaari, varudham, avar, paramapidaavukke, kilkupidindhundhade, adh, avaray, purunathukkunera? Palavidangalile, neengal, kilkupidindhu, ungalvalkile, kilkupidile, kattukondhukkala?
You would have been obeying in all your aspects and will learn to obedience.
Anal, pidaavukki, avathu, yavlu, kilkupidindhukkaramo, adu mathramay, namme, purunathukkunera, aginuthichellum?
But how much ever we are obeying to the Father alone can take us to perfection.
Yatra, avam, monavadiyaratthala, parkumporathu?
When we read Exodus, chapter three.
Anghey, Mosay, kattarsandikara.
The, the Lord met Moses.
Aha, avanun, guda, avanuttilim, indhay, oru kariyathu, thand, kattachonnan.
He learned to him, the Lord so said such a thing.
Nan unney, angey, parvunadukka, anuppa pogiren.
I am going to send you to Pharaoh.
Monavadiyaram, padthavasanathila, parkumporathu?
Chapter three, verse ten.
Neesrevel, pitthurada, ye, enjanaththay, egithtilirundha, adayathu, varumbadi, unney, parvunaduthukka, anupuvayen, va, endhar?
Aha, unney, parvunadukkay, anupuvayen, va, endhar?
He said, come now therefore, that I will send thee to Pharaoh.
Ingey, ellan, neengavarkumporathu, ellarame, kar, sarisari, chonnadu, neengavarkala?
Here, everywhere we see that everyone is saying, all right.
Aha, thavi, thandraytagapun, anupumporathu, saripoyitvaran, cholltha?
When David was sent by his father, he said, I will go.
Aha, Joseph, anupumporathu, avan, nan pogiren, enduchonnan.
Even when Joseph was sent, he said, I will go.
Esuva, anupumporathu, nan pogiren, enduchonnan.
Even when Jesus was sent, he said, I will go.
Anal, Mosinuvisuyathle, konjuntadumathangal, thavukthi, vandhuvutthathe?
But in that kind of Moses, we see that there was some language came in his life before self.
Avan, chonnara, padinella, vasanathle, na, angaporathukka, adayathu, varai, idukkala, yanakendavudumana, tagriyangadha, nan varamudiyadha?
And he is telling that I am not worthy at all, I am not eloquent and so on.
Aha, nan unyananuppinan, nindhukke, iduva, adayalam?
He is saying that this is the sign that I am sending you.
Ingey, kattakchollar, nan unkudappan, nan unakor, adayalan, daran?
And he is telling that I will give you a sign that I am sending you.
Andavaram, adayalan kodukkara?
And God is giving a sign.
Priyamalavle, nam, adayalan kondumetavara, namakkal, kattariyavu, arputangal, adayalangal, chidukundhey, vudpa?
Beloved, we should become a sign because God is doing signs and wonders for us.
Indhikethanavet, namdri othathay, jayamay, odi kondhukkara?
Today, how many of us are running victoriesly?
Namdri otham, appidi irukkara?
How was our race?
Na, kichilla vasanangal, ungalukchollukkara?
I would like to say some verses to you.
Namdri otham, enbadu, nal, nalavathatla, odi kondhey, irukkavendam?
Our race should be run in a good manner.
Otham, vandhu, slopanave, kurathu?
We should not slow down our race.
Innor, vithulicholapona, thamodikakurathu?
And nextly, if we had to say, we should not tarry.
Otham, thamodichidhu, abidn, chonnai, nee, tholvi, noki, vidduva? If the race is tarrying, then means you are going towards failures. When we read in Exodus chapter five. The race of Sisera was tarrying. The race of his chariot was tarrying. His mother is asking as to why my son's chariot is delaying. And she began to even lament. When the chariot began to slow down itself, she understood that there is something wrong with the son. Reading in Exodus chapter five verse twenty eight. The mother of Sisera looked at the window. And she began to lament. Why is this chariot so long in coming? What is the reason for the wheels of his chariots which went to tarry? To beloved, if our race is going to tarry, then we are going towards failures. If one should tarry, it means he is defeated. Two of them are running, if one should tarry, then it does defeat one. We should not have the sign of defeat in our race. Our race should be increased than in before times. When you see the olden days' car, it will go very slow. Have you seen it? Even now those are existing. He will keep rotating and such cars were in faith on stone. There was a car called Maurice Minor. Maurice Minor. That was a green color and you should rotate with it. Before the servants of God should come in, the driver will keep rotating with it. Now a car like that. Now is it so? Even when you enter, if you put a switch on the remote, the doors will be open. And being seated in the cars, there are vehicles without gear, even without gear, the vehicle is running. How much in advance they have come? Now cars are running without control of speed at all. In a car race, it was only the big the car was started and it was not found at all. All the others are standing somewhere behind, but he is gone. All of them were had doubted. How can he go so fast? Finally, they it was became a report and they checked the engine. He overcame but asked us to why, how can you go so fast? For every vehicle, there is a CC and they went even without that CC. Finally, when they checked it. The engine of a small flight he had set in this car. When he started the car, it went in flight's speed. In this times, see how's to how our races. Is your race tarrying or the chariot also tarrying? If our race is tarrying, then it's the sign of defeat and if you go back, you are defeated and you will not win the prize. Nextly. We should not stop the race. Even he asks you to go run the race, you should not stop in anywhere. You know about the competition between the hare and the tortoise. When both of them competing went. Before the boundary, the hare stopped because the tortoise will take time for it to come. Nextly, before it could wake up, it was announced that the turtle won the victory. Like this in your faith race, you should not stop. Problems may come. Sickness may come. And the devil's problems may come. And there will be accusations. And you will be persecuted evilly. And they will say you are not worthy. And the people who are commenting will keep comments. Now we are running in the race. The others outside will listen. He will say that he will he will never overcome. There will be a great crowd to discourage you, only a small crowd to encourage. If Pakistan is going to play in India. Not all of them who are favoring Pakistan will come to India, only a few of people will be coming and the rest of them will be Indians when they will be discouraging them. In this path, only there are people who are encouraging, a very few. But to discourage you, our majority people. You should never listen to that voice. Satan has kept a great group of people to discourage. This should not happen to you. You cannot do it. They will only speak like this about it. This cannot come to you. You cannot win. Like this, they will say deep things to discourage you, at this time, you should be very strong enough. One person was placed to a place of shooting. And the fruits that were kept there was his mark. That particular fruit should be shot down. Now when he was step placed there. All of them were in order. They are telling everyone. The leaves are all seen there. Yes, it is seen. Only one man skipped simply. What other, do you see the leaf or not? I can see the leaf. And all of them laughed. When there are so many leaves on the tree, this man said that there is no leaf. Then they asked us to what to see. I can see only the fruit, nothing else, he said. We are all seeing around the leaves, but his aim was only the spot. You should see only the goal and not the people who are whistling and encouraging or discouraging or accusing or faulting you, your eyes should be fixed upon him. With no reason, you should stop your race. Second Kings. Chapter four. Verse twenty four. There the shunnamites says, you run now, I pray thee, you should not hinder anywhere. Looking at her. You take you run now. Until I command you, you should not stop anywhere where you run. Because the child is dead. He should be made alive. And there is no time for him to go and inquire anybody on the roadside. In this place where we are doing the bull of the father, there is no time for us to go and ask the welfare of our relatives and stop a race. And to her, the child's life was important. Somehow the child should be rose risen up. At that time, that prophet should be brought to her house. Therefore she says, slack not the riding. With no reason, you should stop with riding. Dear beloved, there will be many problems in our race, but in no situation, we should stop with our race. Some of them have run well. But now saying that such people are saying these things and accusations, they are stopping with their race. And to the Galician church, it is said that the church had run well. They will give even their eyes. They had so much of love towards them, they have kept them even as God. To that extent, they had a great hope and faith upon Paul. When we read in Galatians chapter four. Verse fourteen. You received me as an angel of God even as Christ Jesus. If it is servants of God, he will even keep on his head and go. But as days went by. The problems of them increased. And flesh entered. Where the flesh comes in, there begins failures. Fleshly talks, fleshly natures and fleshly actions will automatically bring us to a stoppage. When we read in five seventeen. Five seven. He did run well. It's a good church which runs well. Even the sufferings which our people have suffered in olden times would be marvelling. But now if you should consider, there is no comparison at all. How it will be? Many of them are like this. We have left the blessings which he had. There are a group of people who have left the first love. There are a group who have left their first works. This is the state of the Galician church. When they did run well, when they gave room to flesh, when they began to consume each and other, their race was hindered. Our race should not be a race of hindrance. You should play your life and finish your race till the end. You run well. Don't stop with your race. Taking cheese and the parched corn, if all his friends have eaten, come back and how it will be? Did he do like that? Did he do like that? When anybody asked him on the way, he just kept going straight his race. You run well. He straightly ran to the military into the war field. The Lord has kept a path for us. It is in this path that we should run. It might be the only path, it might be boring to you, but you should not be worried about this because it's the path that the Lord has determined for you. And we read in Hebrews twelve one. That is run with patience, the race that is set for us. That is a race which is set for us. You have not fixed it, but the Lord had fixed it for you. It is the Lord which has kept you in that race. You should look unto him who is the author and finisher of our faith. Do not look at the relatives and run. Do not look at the servants of God and run. Do not look at the baby birds and run. Do not go to the theatre and run. Do not go towards backsmile. Do not go run towards defeat. In the race, we should run looking unto him who is the author and finisher of our faith, we should run with patience the race. Even if the race is tarrying, it will go waste. If the race has stopped, the race we have done, he that is gone and win. After running well, if you should change your path, it will go in vain. Otherwise you can stay well. If you had run the race thus far and you change your path and all the race that you have run thus far is then win. You should run in the path which the Lord has set before you. The Lord has kept every path for everyone. If you are called to be a slave, be a slave. If you are called to be free, then you be free. In whichever path, the Lord has kept for you, go joyously in it. Can you go like that? Just think and see. We are going out somewhere and when we are asked, we say we came there for a change. It is only man who is looking for a change, none of the other creations look for a change. Reading nineteen psalm. It is said about the sun that it is most delightful to run in its path, it is like the bright groom coming out of its changing and rejoiceth as a strong mentor on a race. From the time the Lord has created the sun, even until now, it has a path and without boring, it's running in its race. If we should saying that it is boring and changes race, what happened? It is rejoicing to run its race. The two, it's coming out as a bright. One thing is, it's coming as a bright groom. Nextly, it's coming as a strong man. When the hot sun would come, you see as to how bright it is. Is it saying that I have gone on this path and there is something wrong, some problem than the earth? I have crossed the cold lands. I have crossed the north pole or the south pole, it never has complaints, it's not like people like us because we will flee. He does never ask for transport thus far. It has never said it does not want the truth. Every day whether you are waking up or not, it's going in its right ways. One day alone, it stopped there for forty minutes and because God had commanded it, it broke down. It is delighted to run in its race. Every day when it's setting out, it's setting out as the bright. And then the other angle, it's running as a strong man. It's not bothered that the rain has come and the clouds are covered and the and the clouds and thick clouds have come, it's not bothered about anything because it's running because God has commanded it. In our race, we should not run without any rejoicing. We should not stop a race. You should not change the race. If you do anything like this and then all the races and win. That is why in Philippines two fourteen. Paul is writing about his race. I have the great joy in the coming of the Christ because I have not run in my race and win. I have never grieved in my life that I have run my race and win. And I have a great joy that I have run in good. Do we have this rejoicing? And just think and see. Vincent Paul is speaking in Galatians two two. That by any means, I should run and had run not in vain. That I should run or I had run. That which I had run thus far and what I am running now is not in vain. How clearly man is having a shwati concerning his race. They find in any situation, our race should be very careful. Some of them are saying they cannot run. That are the group of lot. And to Lot, he said, run to the mountain. He says, I cannot run to the mountain. In Genesis nineteen ninety, we can read this. When he was asked to flee to the mountain, he said he cannot do so from that there was a great feeling in his life. In some situation or some accusation or some false reports, if any of you have stopped with your race, have slowed down your race, today you rectify it and come back to that race. One day Philip was found with his four young children in his house. He was found in the house of four virgins who were in his house. What happened? One day suddenly the spirit of God is asking him to go towards the wilderness. And he came to the wilderness. And there was a chariot going on. And the minister was going on. Immediately the spirit of God is asking him to go join the chariot. He didn't, he was not given a chariot and asked to go join the chariot, but he asked him to run to the chariot. If he is told to such a person as us, what will he say? What will I have done or what would you have done if it's told to you? This, imagine the situation. And Philip ran and joined it. He ran fast and joined the chariot. These days, if we are asked to run, we have to run. We should not say we cannot. Because the Lord has trusted you, it's possible with you. When he is taking you out of the world itself, he is saying that he can change your sign into Jerusalem. After coming here, you should not say that it is not possible with you and it cannot do it and destroy the plan of God. Now he is asking you to get a sign. How did David go back? He only wanted to return back with the pledge of the father, but God had given him the sign of his throne. This is what happened to Joseph too. He asked him to bring him word back again, when did he bring back? When he brought back the news. He was seated in the second posting of the pharaoh. Therefore, what is the reply? Not just writing and getting a sign. You should finish the race victoriously. That is the sign. You run fast and come back with a sign. I tell you of three signs. Rehab unto the spies who came to her house, she asked for a sign. You give me a sign that you have come here and you will save my life. Immediately they tied out a red thread in the window and said that this is the sign. Nextly, it's Cain. He killed this brother. Now there was a great curse upon him. Now he goes to God. The curse which you have given is hard for me to bear. He who sees me will definitely kill me. Then the Lord said, no, he will not kill you because I will put a sign upon you, you will escape. That the flesh well then said, man not touch us, the Lord has given us a holy spirit that is a sign given to us, it is preserving us. If that sign is not upon us, then witchcraft would put you to naught. If that sign is not upon you, man would have swallowed you alive. If that sign is not on you, then Satan would have cast you into some dustbin. God gave a sign for Cain and he delivered him. And unto us also, the Lord is giving us such a sign. Even unto Saul, there was a sign given to him, you go, certain things will happen in such a place and this is a sign. And the Lord said unto King Hezekiah that he will be healed. And he said, on the third day, you will go to the temple of God. And he had it out. Then Lord gave me some sign. Immediately he asked to what sign he wanted. He asked if the sun should go forward or back. What a question it was? Now he was in a serious condition to his death and he is very clear. If the sun has gone forward, then it will go very fast, but do you bring back the dial? If you should ask the scientist. If you read the scientific books. Or if you read the books of concerning the space. There is a result as to the sun is slowed down for so many hours. Hezekiah in that there is forty minutes or whatever time. One is in the time of Hezekiah, that the sun was slowed down and in the time of Joshua, it was slowing down. And it was these two times that it was slowed down. And he was at the time to death, but when he was crying also, he said, let the sun turn back ten degrees. Like this, you have got the sign from God for your job, for your marriage, for all the things which you have, you've got the sign from God, but at the time of your race, at the end of your race, you should go with the sign. Firstly. You should run, finish the race with the sign that you have kept the faith. You should not finish the race with tears, but with joy. Thirdly. You should not end the race with evil news, but with good news. When these rings are not found in you, then you have no sign, it's true, you are defeated. Second Timothy four seven. I have fought a good fight. And I have finished my course. I have kept the faith and finished. Henceforth, there is laid there for me a crown of righteousness. This is not the one who is dead speaking, but the one who has finished his race and he was having the. This is the first sign. I have kept my faith. This sign, there is no entry for you. At the end of your race, you should finish with faith. He who is winning, he'll automatically lift his hands. Nobody is asking him to lift his hands, but with the internal. When there is a voice coming from out of you saying, I have kept the faith, you are finishing victoriously. If you have this sign, it is alright. When you read about Samson. It's true, he had failures in his life. But he was entered into the list of heroes of faith. He was, he had failures. But at the end of his race, you can see that his has grown up. Although before the sight of man, you have seen to be failed, but before God, you should be victorious. Secondly. Acts twenty twenty four. I decide to finish my course with joy. Crying and crying, if you finished the race when my mother died, she finished her race with tears, what's the reason for it? Because I am leaving my children going. When you finish the race, you should finish with joy saying that I am going to see the face of my Lord and not be grieved concerning your children that you are leaving them. When you should finish the race, you should say that you should not be worried about me, I am going to see my Lord and I am going to be with my Jesus and should finish your race with joy, are you going to go with cry? You should finish the race with joy. That is why he says, I am not mindful of anything. At the time when you finish the race, you should not have anything, whether your wife or your husband or your parents, children or your oxen or your cattle, none of these should come into your mind. I decide to finish my course with joy. Firstly, you should finish your race saying that I have kept my faith, secondly, you should finish the race with joy. Second Samuel chapter eighteen. Your race should finish with good news. That I have kept the fellowship of the saints. Such a good news should be found in you. Reading in second Samuel chapter eighteen. He is saying that if you have good news, you run. Second Samuel chapter eighteen verse twenty two is saying, my son, if you do not have good tidings, then what's this if you are running? And to Joaphim, he is asking. Then he said, high master, the son of Saddok, he said to Joaphim, you do not run because you do not have good tidings. Unto the, unto David, the watchman who was standing in the forties turning, one man is coming. And the king is waiting. He is not able to go back to his home and sit down, he is standing in the dog step. He is saying, being in the gate, he is asking us to, what's the news, why is he coming? Then the king is saying, if he be alone, there is tidings in his mouth. Then how is the king's expectation? He is expecting for good tidings to come. He sent you to this world. Every time he closed his eyes and kneeled down, he has been given you. Now everything is given and closing your project is going to take you away. And your time is going to get over. When you finish and go, what does he expect? You should say good news and when he will say, well done, faithful and good servant, you enter into the pleasure of my master. Then the king said, if he be alone, he bringeth good tidings. Then another man came. And that watchman is saying. Another man is also coming, he said. And the king said, he is, in his mouth is also good tidings. Even twenty six verse, we see he bringeth tidings too. The race is going to get over and they are going to come the king. As he is running, it's the watchman is saying. Now two of them are drawing close. And the watchman said, there is one more who is running in the foremost, his running looks like Ahimaz, the son of Saddok. And he exactly says. And the watchman says that one man of the two is coming fast and one is like the high master, the son of Saddok. And the king said, he is a good man and committed with good tidings. The king's expectation, the father's expectation is all the same, that you should finish the race with joy and you should keep the faith. He is come. And his race is over. The king came and asked, what's the news? And he said, when I was starting, there was a great tumult, but I do not know what it was. For this, did you run so far? Magne, enna seidi enna? In verse twenty nine, he says, the king is asking, is all well and as to how the situation is, he is telling, when I started, there was a great tumult, I don't know what was. The king was tense up. You have run all the race and it's a waste. And I thought that you are a good believer. And I said that you are a good worker. And the king thought that he will have good tidings and he thought he is a good man and coming from the war field and so much a distance, he is telling that he does not know what it was and the king looking at him said, turn aside and stand there. Verse thirty, he says, turn aside and stand there. What's the use of running? All the tons are tricked you, you ran even without drinking water, what's the use of your running? Next second, he came. And Kushi had come home and said.